I'd like to take a motion to reconvene in open session at 7:03, 4. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Capwell.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Nato. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Forjay.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of the January 9th, 2019 meeting that we just had. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Nato. Dr. McGee, Volvo.
Chairman Forjay.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
During the closed session, the committee voted to uphold the superintendent's recommendation with modifications. Will you all join me on a moment's silence and stand in the closing sound of the flight? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, whose name stands in one nation of God, with the mission of truth, liberty, and justice for all. Dr. McGee, Volvo.
Chairman Forjay.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Here.
Mrs. Capwell.
Here.
Mrs. Nato.
Here.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Here.
I believe we have the Consock High. Do you want us to go down there or?
We're going to perform based on you open here, is that okay?
Alright, so I can see, alright.
My name is Olivia DuKlos and I am a senior at Wunsakit High School and I play Vanessa. Thank you for allowing us to perform a small piece of our spring production in the Heights. But before we do, we would like to share with you how work to rule this year has affected our program. The spring productions that our school have been putting on for the past 20 years have been possible through student fundraising monies. With them, some of our productions have cost up to $30,000. With work to rule, fundraising has been a big issue. Last year's teacher participated in a fundraiser called The Voice, which brought in about $4,000. This year, they were unable to perform since it took place outside of school hours. Although teachers are our biggest supporters in fundraising, some felt without a raise, they could not afford to support the endless fundraising demands that our students put on the line. Normally, we hire a live orchestra of professional musicians. This costs between $7,000 to $10,000. This year, because funds were very limited, we had to opt for pre-recorded instrumentation, which is just not the same. Melissa Oliver, a teacher at Vernon, usually does all of our costuming for our shows. Since this is not a paid position, she cannot help us with work to rule. Linda Barrett, a teacher at Citizens, has spent countless hours at our school working vocally with students in our shows. Since this is not a paid position, she cannot help us with vocals. Ironically, however, it is interesting to note that the student that she spent the most time helping was the lead of Crazy for You, Victor Hunt, the mayor's son. Mr. Depot, a teacher at the high school, stayed after school many hours helping students with songs as well as student orchestra members. This year, he cannot help us. Lastly, Mrs. Mayello always has some faculty members in our shows. It's awesome as students to experience theater with our teachers, but this year, we only have two, Mrs. Dorado and Mr. Depot, because they come and rehearse with us very minimally on their preps. Normally, we have a lot more faculty members, but because they aren't supposed to come outside of school hours, they cannot participate. Needless to say, In the Heights has many challenges, but I am proud to say that we are nobles, so we persevere. We'd love to get some support from the administration and the school committee by coming to see one of our shows on April 4th through the 6th. Next, I'd like to introduce Marco Hernandez, a junior who plays Usnabi.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Marco Hernandez y yo soy Usnabi in the Heights, creado de Lin-Manuel Miranda. Este una comunidad de personas muy trabajadores que tienen problemas en su vida dentro del barrio de Washington Heights, New York. Hay alguien que me tiene?
Go ahead.
So sorry for the Spanish, but it's exciting for someone like me to know that there's a show that one-third of is being performed in Spanish. Holler! This play celebrates diversity, which Wunsakit High School certainly has a lot of. In the Heights is about a Latino neighborhood of working class, people struggling in the barrio of Washington Heights, New York. Lin-Manuel Miranda used the influence of music to explore themes like hope in times of adversity and the importance of family ties. In the number we are going to perform for you tonight, someone in the poverty-stricken barrio has purchased the winning lottery ticket, but no one knows who yet. In this piece, all of the characters get to dream about what they do with the winning
$96,000? Damn! $96,000? Dollars? Holler! $96,000? Yo, somebody won it! $96,000? Yo! If I won the lottery tomorrow, well, I know, I wouldn't bother you when I'm a spendin' spree! I'll pick the business door and pay the entrance fee! Then maybe if you're lucky, you'll stay friends with me! I'll be a business man, rich as day, need a daddy! Donald Trump and Nigel Lyson, he's my caddy! My money's making money, I'm gonna report a moto, keep the lane! I want the rap string like Frodo! Yo, yo, Mr. Black and Luffy, yo, next thing, off your line, next to no show! Well, you skinning the bulls, see out the rodeo! I got hoes that a phone book in Tokyo! Ooh, you better stop rappin', you not sweaty! It's gonna get hot and heavy, you already sweaty! Yo, 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 swipe that it is, shut up, smoke over me, fool, you dead bitch! Ask for you, Mr. Rolo of the shite! $96,000 ain't enough to choose for, damn, ma! I have enough to knock your ass off as taxes! You'll have an act that's full of Jack after tax, $96,000! Ay, alabanza! $96,000! No me diga! $96,000! I never win shit! $96,000! Real though, imagine how we feel going real slow, down the highway of life with no regrets! And no breaking your neck for respect or a paycheck! Real though, I'll take a break from the wheel and we'll throw the biggest block party, everybody here! It's a weekend where we can breathe and get easy! Yo, ma, it's me, check my ticket! (singing) 1, 2, 3, what was you doing? I'm D.C., you want me? (singing) You want me? Esta reggaeton tricky! I know, $96,000! I started my life with a brand new lease! Atlantic City with a man who breaks and the brand new lease! Or maybe just please. Y'all are freaks! Yo, I'm the same. Can't sleep on the gate until these crazy hypotheticals, if you do want to run, then go ahead, creep! (singing) Cross the mouth, believe you pursue 'em, and with those $96,000, what I'm doin'? What you doin'? What am I doin'? What am I doin'? It takes more than that cash just to save my ass from a billion rumors, so you can't get the property ruined! I'm really the one you, 'cause the only room that the view is a room with you in it! And I can give a butt a glob, yeah, the rest of it is flappy, I'm the one that'll block all the facts! You really love the village? No. Tell the baby kisses, and I'll be young as a cocoon and watch the heat dance! Yo, be $96,000! I bought this house, get the body ill, do it while there's that brown! The kids are living without, I'm for education, change the station, digital population vacation, the rent's isolated! What? And the rent, what? Operation when you shoot it down, say, what? I'm in a pressure, what? To be hated, what? In the city, y'all, makes the place, whoa! Take it, take it, invest in protest! Don't lose my confidence, the city takes nothing! Ain't no disrespect! I never sleep because of ghetto, has to be a promise to the people! You are so cute! I was just thinking off the top of my head. Maybe 6K, bro. (singing) If I win the lottery, you'll never see me again. Damn, we only joking, stay broken! (singing) I'll be downtown! I'll get a nice studio, I'll get out of the barrio! If I win the lottery, you'll wonder where I'm at! Yo! (singing) I'll be downtown! (singing) I'll be downtown! (singing) I told me, you! (singing) My friend will leave!
That was really exciting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now I'll open up to good and welfare. If there's anyone who'd like to address the school committee, just come to the podium. State your name and address for the record, please. Anyone? There are no more. Let's move on. Recognizations and announcements, Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to again thank Mrs. Mayello and then wonderful Wunsakit High School Theater students. They put on an amazing production every, every single year. I'm looking forward to going this year. So it's a great, great job. Congratulations also to the Wunsakit High School's four Cyber Patriot teams. This year's teams consisted of P-Tech team and three Air Force Junior ROTC teams. The P-Tech and two Air Force Junior ROTC teams will be competing in the Silver Tier of the State House on January 11th. Good luck to the Wunsakit High School teams. Congratulations also to all Wunsakit High School debaters who attended the third All-Division Rhode Island Urban Debate League tournament at URI recently. Wunsakit won Speaker or Team Awards in all three divisions. In varsity, Kyle Roberts placed on the first-place team for the tournament. Dolce Nunez and Hillary Villavong placed second. Eris Lu earned the third Speaker Medal. The Wunsakit team also showed remarkable success in the JV Division, ranking the second and third place Team Awards. Parker Penn and Jesse Chaconi took second place, while Magda Wadi and Mara Chitpanam took third. In the Novice Division, Julie Dalencar won the third-place Speaker Award. Congratulations to all Wunsakit High School debaters. The Second Annual Job Shadowing Day, which will be held on Friday, February 1st, is an initiative sponsored by General Treasurer Seth Magaziner's office and includes the partnerships the Rhode Island State House, Department of Treasury, Fidelity Investments Incorporated, Wunsakit Credit Union, and a Census Operations Center, among others. It allows students from various Rhode Island high schools to spend a day at a financially-focused institution, learning about careers in finance, interacting with financial executives, and touring facilities. Fidelity Investments is providing transportation by bus, free of charge, to those schools whose financial roundtable partners requested. The high schools that are partnering are schools in which a faculty member of said school is a member and partner of General Treasurer Seth Magaziner's Financial Empowerment Roundtable, to which Wunsakit High School teacher Suzanne Walker has been a member three years now. We'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mrs. Walker for taking on this initiative and securing funding for transportation for our students. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. McGee, thank you. Any school committee member who'd like to address the superintendent on recognitions? We need a motion to receive and place on file recognitions and announcements. I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Nato, on favor.
Aye.
Next, we'll approve the minutes. First, I'll make a motion to approve the December 19, 2018 closed session minutes.
Second.
Second.
Seconds.
Seconded by Vice Chair Burke. Any corrections, comments? None? Dr. McGee, Volvo.
Chairman Forjay.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the December 19, 2018 open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Capwell. Any comments, deletions, changes? None? Dr. McGee, Volvo.
Chairman Forjay, yes. Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next, we'll go on to the Consent agenda. Is there any, if any school committee member would like to take any items? We need a motion to discuss and approve the Consent agenda. I'll make the motion, is there a second? Mrs. Nato, seconded. Any discussion? Volvo.
Chairman Forjay.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
We have no communications. For school committee reports, although the CILAC is not a subcommittee, but is a very important part of our district, alas, Mrs. Kepiscus, the others, an update on CILAC.
The CILAC met for its monthly meeting on Thursday, January 3rd, 2019. In all business, we discussed work to rule and its effect on special education students. We discussed the new changes to graduation portfolio requirements, to the extent that they're going to affect students in special education, and in particular, students on alternate assessment. We also discussed the issue with regard to out-of-district students not receiving all communications, with regard to what's going on in the schools, things that involve them, in particular, on the issue with regard to the graduation requirement change that was communicated. We discussed that the parent support group has monthly meetings. We advise us the dates of those meetings. Those are available in our minutes. If you want them, you can contact me. We discussed the upcoming ride support visit, and we received an update as to the Wunsakit High School Behavioral Program. Parents raised issues with regard to upcoming transitions and how to facilitate having staff members from the school of students moving to attend IDPs at the school they're currently attending to try to ease transition for students. We also discussed students leaving out-of-district placements and returning to our schools to some degree as a result of the implementation of the behavioral program at the middle school. Dr. Sullivan provided us with an update as to ESY, and we discussed the issue regarding childcare. We're seeking to have childcare at CILAC meetings to hope more parents can attend, and that doesn't look like it's going to happen. The line share of our meeting, we discussed the Rycast results and the school report cards. That discussion lasted well over an hour. Dr. McGee was kind enough to give us what I would call the Spark Notes version. I won't give into those details because it's my understanding he will be presenting his interpretation of those results to us at our next school committee meeting. Updates were provided from the Brown's Special Education Advisory Committee liaison, who happens to be me. We had members ask questions with regard to school safety in particular, asking the fire department personnel to attend our schools, to instruct our students as to how not to be frightened of fire and shelter, turn out gear, things like that. That's very important with special ed kids. The next meeting of the CILAC will occur on Thursday, February 7th, right here at the Hamlet Middle School, in room 124. Please enter through door 3, the door closest to Hamlet Avenue in the rear of the building. That is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Any school committee member have any questions, comments, or our CILAC liaison? If not, we need a motion. I need a motion to, on, accept and receive on file. Motion made by Mrs. Nato.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Burke. On favor. We do have some folks, I believe, who were appointed through the Consent agenda. I do hear, please stand, we recognize. Let's go on to conferences and discussions. Dr. McGee, technology update.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to defer to Mr. Natariani to provide you with, committee with the technology update.
So before I get into the standard reports that I present every meeting, I just wanted to bring your attention to three bullet items and update menu. Over the holiday break, we installed wireless access points at the Leo Svoia Elementary School, and we'll be doing so in every building over the break periods, which will bring our wideband capacity up to the standard. So we expect to have that project completed by the end of the week. Like I said, we want to do it over the breaks and not in the day before the construction. Two, a more labor-intensive project for the technology department was moving and reconnecting all the career technology center equipment, bringing it back from the high school and moving it over to Career Tech Center in anticipation of the opening on January 2nd. And the third major project we entertained was assembling two chrombook carts that will be dedicated for beta testing, which is the testings going on now through, I think it's the end of the month, I don't remember if it's ever before that. Aside from that, onto the standard reports. The first report you receive is the incident summary report. It gives you a snapshot of the last 30 days' worth of work orders that have been submitted to the IT department. As you can see, we closed up 148 work orders the last 34 days. 35 units are in the queue, six have been declined, three are resolved, and after several days, they'll move to be closed. Three are in progress, assigned two. Two are waiting for vendor, some are waiting for input back from users, and two of them were due to get work orders, the issues reported by two individuals. The second report is the incident statistics relating to how long the average time it takes to close a work order, as the committee. We generally try to stay within a two-day time period on this, based on the fact that, you know, we don't want teachers waiting for a extended period of time. Two days doesn't necessarily reflect, but that's the average, and most things are solved much quicker than that, but if we have a larger issue, it takes a little longer, that's usually what drives up the time period to respond. And the third report is the satisfaction report. The green indicates those users that were satisfied, yellows, people that were not satisfied. I usually eliminate the non-hearser, in some cases, it's a non-factor. The yellow for the December 3rd indicated where two satisfied individuals, and the yellow for the December 7th with one individual, which I generally contact and find out exactly what was wrong. As a general rule, sometimes it's just a miscommunication where they're not satisfied because they asked us something that we don't do here, or it might have been a miscommunication where they didn't realize something was fixed, so they checked it, but... So that's where we are with the incident statistics in terms of satisfaction. That's it.
Any comments, questions for Mr. Natariani? If not, I'd like a motion, I'll make a motion to accept and put on file this report, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kepiscus, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, Dr. McGee, Facility Transportation Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to once again defer to Mr. Natariani, who was our African Facilities and Transportation Director. Burke's updated.
So for the facilities update, before I review the work order reports, I'd just bring your attention to we're currently exploring grant funding to ensure that the playgrounds at Harris Elementary School and Burton Heights Elementary School are ADA accessible, the ones at Coman and Cool Park. So we're currently looking for some grant money or options to make interest of something else, because they are not ADA compliant at this time. Two, we're going to be sending out a brief survey to all the classrooms we're going to do by building, just surveying the general cleanliness of the classroom, conditions of the windows, ceilings, plumbing, heat. So it's a larger district, and I feel that direct feedback from the teachers is probably something that's going to allow us to formulate a plan to address some of the things that are going on in our buildings, because we have some aging buildings here, and it's not possible to visit every classroom. So we will be sending out a survey in the near future, and we're hoping that teachers take their time to provide some input so we can formulate a plan. Over the holiday break, which we've given up there, Dr. McGee, pretty much all the time, well, all of the time, for the facilities department was spent on moving back furniture and equipment and moving the career tech center. And Dr. McGee just got a report on it later on. That being said, the three reports are the work order system, the first is the incident summary report. Over the last 30 days, you can see there were 62 work orders submitted, nine assigned, six closed, three declined, and two were duplicated. I'd like to say, which I've said the last several times I've done this report, that while this does give you some type of a snapshot of what occurs, there are many things that occurred during the day that are not captured in the work order system. If we have a blocked plumbing line, if we have electricity that's out, if we have a broken window, we don't wait for a work order to come in, we dispatch a facilities worker to address it immediately, so things don't always get captured. I'm trying to work on a system to do that, but if it's an emergency, if something needs to be addressed right away, I'm certainly not going to have somebody present, call me, and put a work order in, and send somebody down. Also, this does not reflect the work orders, the work we may perform because of the fact that the vast majority of the month of December, we spent getting the career tech center up and ready, so we need to meet the deadline, and we told everyone about that in September when we made a decision. The second report is the incident statistics response time. We average eight days. Again, I'm not sure exactly how accurate it is based on what I've just told you, but I do capture it just in case. And again, this could reflect anything from, you know, there's a heater that's broken, I'm going to wait for a pot for a week, to, you know, a broken window or whatever. So we still, still take a look at it, but we do want to try and improve that time, that response time. And the last report, we've only received one response back for feedback in the last 30 days, and the person that responded back was satisfied. We'd like to, we went out to the committee that this report is reflective of what the secretaries respond to. So unlike technology, teachers do not put work orders directly in, they have to submit it to the main office, so the main office is aware of what's going on in the building. So even if a teacher was satisfied that we responded right away and we fixed the issue, they don't have the opportunity to respond. The only thing that we get is if a secretary hears from them and says, "This is great", they can respond. So I did include it just as a point here, but I'm not sure what value it would keep pointing to. Looking at this in the future, because of the way our work order system works, we're going to consider. And that concludes my mail pitch.
Just one question, Mr. Natariani. Last year, when we were looking at the Coman Playground, we went and visited all the other schools, Dr. McGee and I, and I think you might have been part of that, maybe it was Mr. Tompkins. And we went from school to school. And actually, I remember going to Poty, where they had, was it crushed chips as a floor? It seemed like that would not be ADA approved, and it seemed like that one should also be included in this.
You were correcting me, I will add that to the list. So we will add that to the list.
And the other, just the other comment is the heating situation that we have on, has that been squared away?
It has been, all the classrooms now have controls. All the classrooms in the new wing that have electric heat have controls.
Sure.
The library, they're still working on it because they're having some issues with accessibility to the unit. However, we monitor the heat, we make sure that it's a naturally heated temperature in the room, and it's maintaining the heat necessary to occupy the space. And I just like to point out for the committee knowledge that that one wing is electric heat, the rest of the building is the old heating system, and it's more of a system where it's just either the heat is on or it's off. Also, our older buildings don't have controls. The classrooms allow you to control the classroom heat in that individual room. The heat is either on or it's off, and that's, that does come up with some issues for our staff in terms of the temperature.
But I thought that was one of the items that we were looking to fix, because some were freezing and worrying cold, the others, the others. were freezing and were in cold, the others, the others, it was suntanned, the ocean was so hot.
In the electric classrooms, we've been able to really control the heat in that individual wing.
Right.
The rest of the building is a system that we would have to place the entire system. And that's something that I talked to Mr. Perrier and Dr. McGee in terms of bringing it forward to the facility subcommittee, needs to be addressed in a five-year capital plan funded by the governor's foundation.
Any school committee members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Now, the survey, once again, given to the staff on the conditions of the classrooms. Has that survey been done before?
No, to my knowledge, no.
Okay, so there's no way to compare, you know, what the past and what the conditions are today?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay. And secondly, would the committee or the facility subcommittee be given a summary of this survey?
I'll be sharing the full results with the subcommittee once the window closes. So, what I plan on doing is sending it over to Google Doc, tell the teachers they have access to Google, to the classrooms and laptops, and I anticipate we'll probably give them a 30-day window to get their responses back, and then we'll take all of the responses in a summary, and we'll use that to feed into some necessary quick repairs that we can do, and then what needs to be rolled into some type of a capital plan for the future.
I think it's a great idea, because to get a complete overview of the state of the district, probably is an office in someone's radar, so this would be great. Good job.
It's interesting, Vice Chair Burke and Mr. Natariani, that heating situation at Vernon, we were unaware, but one of the teachers was talking to someone who I bumped into on election day, and she mentioned to me that this was a situation, so, you know, Dr. McGee, Mr. Natariani wouldn't visit the school. And I think this survey is very important, Vice Chair Burke, because it gives our teachers, our principals, an opportunity to just let us know what's going on, what needs to be done. Sure that we prioritize, but if something is really critical, we'll be able to address it immediately. So, I think that's great that you're doing that.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. Do you have any problems that are ongoing and not easily resolved without spending a lot of money? Yeah?
Yes, Mrs. Nato, there are quite a few issues here in the district that require significant funding. Again, we'll have to rely on a five-year capital plan, funding through the state to address things that we can address in-house, or things that we address under the local operating budget, as we can do, but there are quite a few different items that we're going to need to discuss in terms of a long-range vision here for the district.
So, you have a priority list?
I have a list of items that I will submit to the subcommittee, for the subcommittee and the school committee to prepare against. I have my suggestions, but I think I'll turn it over to the committee.
And I just want to comment that before this survey will be initiated, in the past, school committee members got the calls. So, if there was a problem, you would hear about it.
And we have gotten calls.
I know. Anyway, I think that's a great idea, because I think you need the classroom teachers informed also, that person's not in that classroom five days a week. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Chairman, just what is the timeline for the survey to go out to the teachers?
So, I'm still kind of, I'm still working on the survey and the questions, going to share it with the members of the facility staff, to make sure there's not something that I'm missing here, obviously, with Dr. McGee. So, I would anticipate it will involve some time at the end of January, beginning of February. It will be open for a 30-day window, so I anticipate having some time to discuss sometime in March.
And just to also account what Vice Chair Burke indicated, this proactive approach is welcomed and appreciated. Very thoughtful of you.
Do I have a motion to receive and place on file, the facility report?
How's it?
Mrs. Nato made a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Vice Chair Burke, second is the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next, any motion to discuss and approve the Wensocket School Committee Subcommittee? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Kapiskas and Vice Chair Burke, second. Any questions? But I think we have, in our package, you have a list of subcommittees. We can take a peek at those. I received, I asked you, all of you to give me your choices, and the way the subcommittees have been assigned is the curriculum, an assessment, an instruction subcommittee. I will be on that, I will serve on that along with Mrs. Kapiskas. The health and wellness will be Vice Chair Burke, and Mrs. Nato. The facility safety committee will be served by me and Ms. Capwell. The technology subcommittee, Ms. Capwell and Mrs. Kapiskas. The policy and governance committee, subcommittee, will be served by Mr. Burke and Ms. Capwell. The finance committee, I will sit on that committee along with Mrs. Nato. And we've added two liaisons. One is the parent advisory council, that Mr. Burke will be the liaison, and the special education local advisory committee will be liaised by Mrs. Kapiskas. Any thoughts, questions on this? Eric, not vocal.
Chairman, Chairman Borja, yes. Vice Chair Burke, yes. Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
I would suggest that we touch base with Dr. McGee and his place, and start setting up meetings of the subcommittees as soon as possible, so that they all can get out feet wet, hopefully not literally, Mr. Natariani, especially in any of the buildings that are, we don't want that, okay? So, we should do that as soon as possible. In addition, we have had some folks who are not on the school committee or administration who have served on the subcommittees, and I would ask that we reach out to them to see if they want to continue to serve. So, we can do that by letter, that they want to.
Excuse me, I have a name for a visitor I had, that I would like to add, and this is a person who came forward to me and said they would like to do this kind of thing.
Okay, that's wonderful. Maybe you can just follow up?
I will.
This is one that's wonderful. Next, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I have quite an extensive superintendent's report.
We have a minute or lunch?
Well, I'll try to not take too long, but I want to make sure that I attempt to answer everyone's questions. So, I'm going to start with the Wensocket Area Career and Technical Center update. We are all relieved here in the school department that the project was officially completed, and the remaining students and staff returned to the building, first day back from vacation on January 2nd. I want to also let the committee know that the project officially started on October 27th. I want to thank, I want to thank the custodian and maintenance department here in the district, because one of the things that we did to make sure that we could open up on time on the 2nd of January was to make sure that the building was clean. As you can imagine, all of the work that was done, you know, over the course of the, you know, one, two months plus, left the building pretty dirty. And I want to, I want to just publicly thank the custodians and maintenance folks in the district for coming away from their schools during the break, to sort of, it was all hands-on debt at the career center. And so, they sort of took one for the team, so to speak, and I, Mr. Natariani, I appreciate what they did to get the school ready. So, I'm going to start by saying that. So, just to sort of summarize the work that was done at the career center, all ceiling tiles and ceiling grids were replaced with new tiles and grid. The carpeting was removed throughout the building, and the carpeting was replaced with floor tiles. The ductwork throughout the school was thoroughly cleaned, and everything above the ceiling tile was completely vacuumed and cleaned out. The rooms were cleaned. The company that we had came in to do the work initially, cleaned the rooms prior to the work starting, and then when the work was completed, they cleaned furniture and did things like that. The halls were also painted, and that wasn't really part of the project. That was done internally with our own painter, Mr. Paul Jakes, who did a wonderful job on the other halls. And the inspections were completed, obviously, with what we reoccupied the building, fire, electrical inspections were done. Any items that remain, it's a small punch list, and Mr. Natariani is going to be meeting with the contractor next week to go through that very small punch list, but all the major work was done, and I'm looking forward to taking each of you in to see the completed work. It looks amazing. It really looks like a different school. Our plans moving forward, you know, talking about painting, is during the course of the spring and definitely in the summer, we're looking to go in with our own in-district painter to paint classrooms and offices to sort of finish off the even building. But again, very, very pleased that it took longer than we anticipated, but as you know, we made the decision to do this, and we wanted to make the decision of getting it done right the first time, and not just patchworking and then having to come back at elementary meetings. So, it took a little longer than we had hoped, but it was done right, and I think everybody's happy. I know everybody's happy to be back at the career center, actually. The next item I want to address is the chronic, student chronic absenteeism. And you have on your Chromebook, you have some links that are links to some charts. Let me just first start by just reminding the committee that students are considered chronically absent if they're absent for any reason, whether it's, you know, an excused absence, or an unexcused absence, or a suspension for 10% or more of the school year, which comes out to 18 school days, as we have 180 school days in the whole school year. So, I've provided to you a few charts that I, that I actually, you can get them off of the RIDE website. The RIDE website has a lot of really good information with respect to providing supports and assistance to school districts and schools, but with information to chronic student absence. So, the first that I have here, if you have, is, it's titled Chronic Absenteeism in Rhode Island School Districts. And then if you go down a little bit lower, it's titled School Chronic Absenteeism 2017, 2018. So, this data shows last year's percentage of all of our schools in the district around student chronic absence. And if, so if you go to the column that says percent chronically absent, which is, would be the last column, I wrote a few things in here, and I'll explain what that is in a second. But if you look at that information, you know, just looking for my, there it is, pencil. It starts with Vernon Heights Elementary School, and it lists last year's percentage. So, Vernon Heights, 23.9% of the students were chronically absent. I'm not going to, not going to list every single one. You can certainly see them all the way down through Wensocket Middle School of Villanova. That last column, what I did, and it's also a link that you have on the Chromebook, there is a link that you can go to, and it will show you the day-to-day percentage of chronic absence for students at every school basically in the state. So, what I did is I went into that last week just to kind of get a sense of where our schools are currently versus where they were for the entirety of last school year. So, I have it here, so for example, Vernon Heights last year was 23.9. Based on the last week's numbers, percentage, 20.8%. And I apologize for sort of the chicken scraps that you see there, but Citizens Memorial was 23.5, Blue Park was 19.9, Governor Hope here 28.5, and so on and so forth, down to the middle school at Villanova, which was 27.4. Each one of our schools to date, in last week, the percentage is lower than it was last year. Now, you can say, "Well, that's only a snapshot of, you know, barely half the school year." But I'm at least positive that the percentages are lower at this point in time. What we wouldn't want to see would be percentages that are higher. Now, that can fluctuate during the course of the school year. When you go to the, to the link and you access every single school in the state, that ranking is literally day by day. So, you can go in there, and you can see each and every one of our schools in the district, and where they rank as compared to all of the other schools in the state of Rhode Island. So, that's the first link. The second is titled District Percent Chronically Absent. Basically, what this chart shows is the last four years, beginning with the school year 2014, 15, going to last school year, 17, 18. And off to the side, there's a, there's a graphic that shows basically what the data tells you with that chart, but it just shows you visually how our chronic absence has fared over the last four school years. And each, at each level, if you, if you look at that chart, it starts with the elementary, our elementary chronic absent across the board, in 14, 15 was 32.5%. It went down to 25.3, and then up to 27.8 last year, 25.2%. And, you know, what you find is that each, if you take 14, 15 compared to 17 and 18, each of our levels has decreased in terms of the chronically absent students. So, that's the good news. In addition to that, to that good news, they're still high. I'm not going to sit here and say that I'm satisfied, I'm not satisfied with those percentages. What I am happy is that at least they're going down. And I will say, and I've said this before, our principals and our counselors and our social workers and our staff are working very hard to reach out to families, to try to, you know, educate them about the importance of their children coming to school every day and coming to school on time. You know, we have some, some schools are literally sending letters home. You know, at Hamlet Middle School, Mrs. Renegado is literally sending home to students, to the parents of the students who are chronically absent, the number of days that they've been absent as compared to the number of days thus far in the school year. I know Mrs. Moniz, who's here this evening, you know, has a walking school bus where she and staff members actually go in to Vernon Heights on Wednesdays and sort of, you know, round up students and bring them to school. So, and I can have stories about every single school. Those are just two examples, but everyone at every school, they're working hard to try to decrease this percentage, because student chronic absence is one of the indicators of the report bars that our schools have received that come from the RIDE-CAS data. So, it's critical that we continue, and we will continue to address, you know, this crisis, really, and we're working hard, and we're going to continue to work hard on that. But that's what that second link shows you, is to give you a sense of where we come from and to where we are now. The next, I want to make sure I, my notes are coinciding with what we have on the agenda.
Dr. McGee, before you, I just want to talk about the absenteeism that we're comparing by school, one year to another. From what I understand, these absentee rates include suspensions and include absenteeism due to vacations.
Correct.
Okay? And we, so if in one year, say a prior year, suspensions were high, vacations timed out from school is high, and it's lower now, it's kind of hard to, it seems like we've got a factor, I mean, that we should be pulling out to see. These are the RIDE numbers, but again, RIDE just throws everything in the bucket. I'd like to see these numbers pulled out and netted for suspensions and vacations and see, because these are going to be the absentee rates that we're going to be focusing on probably the most. The vacations can be handled separately, and the suspensions, well, they happen. So, but if they're included in these numbers, it's kind of hard to tell, because if a child is suspended, of course, it's not as good, suspended. So, I think we need to gather that information and net these numbers up to give us a much clearer picture of what the absentee rates are from year to another.
Who's the chairman of? Chronic absence implies 15... Who's the chairman of, chronic absence implies 15 days.
Right, right. So in each 18.
18 days. So when those students are suspended on vacation, when they hit the 18 days, they're still chronically absent. The reason may be different. I don't think excuse suspension days from that. So the, so the chronic absence is still what it is.
But Mr. Vice Chairman, if we have, the prior year has high suspension rates, okay? So the kids are out for a long period of time and in this year there's not that many. And we could say, well, but that was improved. But it's because of suspensions. I'd like to see that include them, we have the RIDE numbers, but pull those out to say, all right, excluding those mitigating circumstances, what are, what are the numbers? Because we're always trying to improve, but we're not going to be able to improve suspensions. It's got an app based on discipline and et cetera, et cetera. That's why I'd like to see that netted separated out to give us at least a picture of, and then when we're talking about all the efforts that we're making with attendance, you can see the progress clearly. That's about what, that's my thought here. That's all.
We can attempt to do that. One of the things that we started doing in the beginning of the year is, and we're going to continue to do it. There are a lot of different ways of pulling, pulling data out. One of the things that we looked at was the, the numbers, like, so for example, Vernon Heights, the number of kindergarten students in the month of September that were chronically absent. So what we did is we used the number of, of three, so many students that was absent three or more days just in September. And to, to sort of dig even deeper, we could look at those specific students. We would look, you know, the building administrators would probably look at, okay, let's say, for example, in, in September, there were 10 kindergarten students that were chronically absent. So of those 10, they, they would have to then, you know, have a conversation with the family or, or find out, were you on vacation? Because that did happen, I mean, in, in the beginning of the school year, there were some students at, at some of our schools that didn't, didn't come back until, or didn't start the year until after Labor Day because they were on vacation. You know, we find that that happens in, in January after the holidays this time of the year. Is that we'll get students who will go, you know, who, who will take a trip home, you know, whether they be living in Puerto Rico or, or they'll do that and then. So those are days that they're, they're not considered excused absences based on the definition of chronic absence. So we could look at that to get a sense of, of how many of those days are, you know, vacation and we can even look at the suspension, the number, the number of students and those specific students who are suspended, they're, they're at that one or not. So we, we could, I mean, it's going to take a little time and it's unexpected, but we, but we can, you know.
And the impact may be zero.
Right.
But at least we'll have an idea of, of how we focus on, on the improvements of attendance.
And the goal is, is to individualize this really. And that's what our, our administrators and staff are trying to do. They're trying to reach out, you know, individually to, to students and the families. Because it's one thing to have a percentage to know that, okay, 10, 10% of the kindergarten students are chronically absent. But that doesn't really help you unless you know who they are and you can actually do, try to do something about it and reach out to the families.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. Okay, if you track a child that's chronically absent year after year after year, well, you know, this is a established problem. What happens to the parents of that child? That child is a young child, does not get themselves to school on their own. What happens then? That's where the missing link is right now.
Correct.
Now what can we do about that?
So we have an attendance officer. We have, we, we had two attendance officers, but one of the attendance officers, Mr. Barnes, retired a few years ago. So we're in the process of trying to fill that position. The other attendance officer is Mr. Pickard, Roger Pickard. So what, what we'll do is he, he works closely with the administrators and with the attendance teams at the schools, at the elementary level. So they will give him names of students who the, the school has tried to reach out and make contact with the parent, make contact with the student with respect to their absences. And if, if it's continuing now, the difference between truancy court, the truant students and chronically absent students, it's chronically absent, everything counts for chronically absent, as, as in terms of a student being chronically absent. Truancy, everything doesn't count. So there can be excused absences for students who, who are, who may be considered truant. So that, that's how we do that. Mrs. Nato, is, is Mr. Pickard will, will, you know, make contact with families. And, and sort of the ultimate is that they are, they're brought to truancy court. One of the things that we've seen over the years, truancy court was just reinstated here in Sockit about two years ago. It was here, we were one of the first districts in the state to, to institute truancy court over a decade ago, a long time ago. And we lost it for, for a period of time. But so, so we've had, we've had that ability. It's back now. And what we've seen, Mr. Barnes shared this over the last few years, sharing the data with me, is those students that are in truancy court, a high percentage of those students, their attendance does improve and it does, and their grades improve. So we do see that it does work when you, when you bring them to truancy court. It's sort of a last ditch effort, but it's, it's something that, that we, we do for the most part, find success. But they're, they can only bring so many students to truancy court because it's, it's consuming. So, so we do. So, but that's sort of the ultimate thing that, that can happen to, to a parent if they're not, you know, if your child's not coming to school and there aren't valid reasons for that not to come to school.
So are you saying that that's as much as we can do on our end? Okay, well, the problem is never going to go away until something's done probably legislatively. I would say that when you have to inconvenience parent to parent's voluntarily or some other way, I remember Saturday crisis. And a lot of the parents got really upset because they didn't want their Saturday mornings tied up transporting their children to truancy school. Until that happens, it's not going to make anybody comfortable, unfortunately. But I realize what used to happen and I'm not trying, I'm practically politically correct, which is very difficult because with students, I remember students at the high school that received, their parents received SSI. And the kid now would be out of school and they would make sure that that kid got to school so that check was not compromised. So there's a lesson to be learned there. The lesson is they live in their pocketbook in some way and they might wake up, but we're not in a position to do that, but someone has to be in that position. Because overall, kids that do that, it becomes a pattern with them. And unless they're strong enough to break out of that pattern individually, it continues. So, um, I guess I better go to the General Assembly, huh? No, thanks. I don't want to.
But one of the, when we look at the numbers, the largest, the biggest percentage of that absenteeism is with the high school. So it's not a matter of the little ones anymore.
Yeah.
The biggest, the biggest percentage is well over 40 is similar to high school students. So they've developed that, that habit or whatever, but now they may not be going to school. They may be telling their parents they want school, but they're not there, obviously because of the attendance records. So that's even tougher.
So the next link that I provided for you is the average daily attendance, which the average daily attend, the difference between the average daily attendance and chronically absent, chronically absent, is that the average daily attendance is, is a percentage for each school and for the district that tells us the percentage of students that are present on any given day. So that number tends to be much better than our chronic the absent numbers. Exactly. So what you have in your, in your packet is a listing of each of our schools by grade level and by month, beginning with Vernon Heights and ending, actually ending at the district level where it takes you through each, each grade level from September through December. So I think I don't know if you've had the opportunity to peruse this, but, you know, if you look, if you're looking for trends, the one trend you will see that probably in every school, probably most grades, is that the average daily attendance starts really high and then it gradually starts to decline. And that's something that we see each year. And ever since I've been tracking this, we've been tracking this month by month. We see that it, that it just gradually declines by month. But this just gives you a good sense of what those percentages are by grade level and by school. And, and it tells you, you know, like you were saying, Mr. Porche, you know, the, the numbers, the percentages, where, where are they, are they lower, you know, in, in, in school? You know, you mentioned, yeah, it's actually the high school, you know, that the numbers, percentages are, are lower there than they are at the, at the other levels. You know, and that's, and that's where we really look to, we, we focus on the high school, I'm not saying we don't. But again, these are patterns that are, that are developed early on in kindergarten, even preschool. We've had conversations with our, our preschool providers in the community, not just the preschool classes that we have at Governor Hope here. But they'll, they'll say to us that they, there are, there are families that they have that, you know, the attendance is poor. And if you're starting with poor attendance in preschool, it, you know, it's, it makes it difficult. Because when they get older, when students get older, you know, when they're, at least when they're younger, the parents make sure that they get to school for the most part. When they're older, they're walking, you know, the parents aren't taking them to school. So they're not always getting to school. So this is something that we track throughout the course of the year. And later this year, I'll share with you where we are at that point in time as well. The next, but the last thing under chronic absenteeism is that link that you have. I think you have that, to go into that. You don't, we don't need to do that now, but that's a link that you can access, which will, as I said earlier, you'll, you'll see every single school in the state and it'll be ranked number one through number 100 or 200, whatever, however, how many schools there are. And you'll just look, it, it lists the school, it lists the percentage, it lists the principal in this league district. So, you know, that would be something to take.
And Dr. McPhee, what I noted, you've got one school that's zero, which is hard to believe.
Right.
But you're going to find most of the rural, outlying schools have very good attendance. Then when you get into the cities, you see Providence, or most of, most of their schools have high, you know, lack of absenteeism and Sockit's included in the mix. Potucket's the same way. So when you're looking at the urban cities and with all the issues that we have here, certainly contributing to the high absenteeism. And that, and that report is very telling as to what we're dealing with.
There are a lot of contributing factors, you're right, and one of them is poverty. And, you know, statistically across the country, you, you find that families that are, that are in poverty statistically have, have higher absence rates and yet again, for a variety of reasons. You know, and we do try to support families as much as we can, you know, whether it's, you know, hooking them up with someone in the community, whether it's CCA or Thunder Mist, you know, there, there are, there are public community organizations that can work with families and to do that, you know, to do that, you know, regularly to try to provide them with those supports. So if, if there aren't any other questions about the student chronic absenteeism, I'll.
Ms. Catlon? Next. I think I would just also support the chairman's request to be able to segment out and break down and kind of call out some of that noise that we may be seeing in some of those numbers, even in seeing that those 60%, and that's the good report for preschool. What sort of breaking it into that pie, what bar, what can you call out? And then what can you then really start focusing on yet? Are things that you can't, you can't take action on, right? How do you solve something if you don't go back through and get to the condo of what's on again?
Thank you. So the next item is the, an update on the out of district placements. Mrs. Nato, that was a question that you would have had at the last school committee meeting. So there is a, you, you do have a document here that, that lists the, the schools, the out of district schools that are students, we have currently 153 students that are in out of district placements for a variety of reasons, not, not just for behavioral, you know, reasons, but for a variety of behavioral, medical, academic. And then there's a, there's a column, the second column is the number of students that we have at each of those placements. And so that just sort of gives you a sense of, of the schools we work with, that we, we send our students to, with the number of students that we have in each of those schools.
Is there a reason why, you know, we have one child at Swansea and one's in Hain Street and not all? Is it just because those schools are providing specific needs that the other schools can't provide? Is that why?
That's, that's, yeah, typically, typically that's the reason, okay? It's, it's to provide the best placement for, for our student. And, you know, there, there might be one school that, that meets the needs of that, that student and we have no other students that are there. So yes, to answer your question.
Have we followed up on these schools? I might want to ask Dr. Sullivan. We've got what, 20 some, 25 schools or maybe 24 schools? How do we know they're doing a good job?
We get reports from each one of the schools and we usually get behavioral data. We get charts from RAC showing how the kids are doing. When they get to certain levels at the school, we start talking about transitioning them back.
Okay.
Okay? And we're in the process right now. I know we've transitioned some back to elementary already and right now we're in the process of transferring, transferring two back to the behavioral programs at the middle school. We transferred one back to the high school already. We actually transferred one back this week and we have two more coming up. Okay? The other thing that I wanted to say is with the out of district schools, once in a while when you see one place, like the one in Swansea, some of those are placed by DCYF, so we have no control over them.
Okay. So is that known as well?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Dr. Sullivan?
Mr. Chairman, also, just to be answered one other question, that the DCYF will put some of the placement in the schools. Is it the special event department that does the others or do parents play a part?
No, the, the ones that you see are the ones that we've replaced, the district has replaced, yeah. And what we're getting now in the last two years are the ones that come from the S of calls. So for example, any child that goes into Deveraux group home in Sockit becomes a Sockit student. So we had a couple lately from Potucket. They grew up in Potucket, they spent all their lives in Potucket, then they were sent to Harmony Hill. When they were discharged from Harmony Hill, they can't go back home, so they go to a group home, which is usually Deveraux. They land in Deveraux and then we are forced to take them and they usually do go out of district because of their needs.
Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
Dr. McPhee, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I will move on to the next item under my report and that is middle school suspension rate. So at the C-LAC meeting, there, there was an agenda item that, that addressed the middle school suspension rate. And the, that data can be accessed through, through RIDE, which submitted the, the RIDE CAS data for schools across the state. And one of the pieces of, of data, or one of the criteria that is, is measured when you look at school rates across the state is our, our student suspensions. So the way that is collected, it's, it's not by a specific number of students who are suspended. The way, the way RIDE calculates the data is they take groups of 100 students. So for example, the middle school, Hamlet, 51.9. There were 51.9 incidents that required suspension per 100 students. So that doesn't mean that it was 51 students that were suspended. It means that there were, there were 51 incidents that, that required, or what result was a suspension. It means that there were 51 incidents that required, or the result was a suspension. So of that 51, you could conceivably have a handful of students that are, that make up that number. You could literally have one student that's suspended, that was involved in, let's say, 10 incidents that require suspension. So that's how they measure that. So I just wanted to clarify that to the school committee. At the next meeting, on the 23rd, we'll be presenting to you formally the RIDE CAS data district wide and we'll be talking about that, as I said, that's one of the indicators that the state, that Department of Education uses to create the index scores that make up the school ratings across the state. The last, so I'm going to sort of dovetail it until my last item of my report is RIDE CAS. Okay, so the Department of Education released their RIDE CAS data, you know, about three weeks ago. And we'll be doing a presentation, as I said, the next school committee meeting, looking at everything. One of the things that was released also after the initial RIDE CAS data was the school district report cards. And it's basically, schools are issued stars from one through five, you know, five being, you know, the very best and one being, you know, the lowest. So we're going to be going through that with you to give you that information. We've been, since we received the data, myself and Dr. Remka and Mrs. DiRiso have been working and going over the data with principals so that they're comfortable accessing it and we want to make sure they can access it before we actually delve into it and start analyzing it. We're going to be doing that with them, we're going to be meeting each principal individually to look at their specific desatuation and so to make plans as we move forward to improve everyone, you know, regardless of the number of stars, everyone needs to improve. So I think that's something that we all agree on. So that's what we see currently with the RIDE CAS data. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any school committee members have any additional questions or comments, superintendent? If not, I'll make a motion, receive and place on file, which you forth in a second.
Second.
Mrs. Kapiskas, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Next was school committee, good and welfare, Vice Chair Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to mention to the community that this past weekend, several, and several members of the committee may also talk about it in greater detail, so I'll be very gentle then, Mr. Chairman. Several members of the committee were able, attended a two-day conference at Bryan University that was sponsored by the Hasfield Institute of Public Policy, the Rhode Island Association of School Committees and the Rhode Island Cities and Towns League. And I just want, you know, it was a wonderful conference. I think we all learned a lot, dealing with finances and negotiations and the community and, you know, it was just, it was a pretty, pretty good, pretty good experience for all of us. So you can see our school committee members are out working.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burke. Ms. Catmore?
Thank you, Chairman. So I'll try to not be redundant, but also comment just in how much I appreciated the time that I got to spend with my fellow school committee members. And then also, the showing from the state of Rhode Island and other school boards was impressive, not only to me, but to the members of the Hasfield Institute. So we also got to learn a bit about what the challenges are that our counterparts in other cities and towns are experiencing. And that was, it was an amazing experience and one that I've had to have. Thank you.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Pretty much do. Like Mr. Burke and Ms. Catmore said, it was a very educational experience, especially for me as a novice school committee person, coming in, not knowing the whole lot, left kind of scared and thinking I have an awful lot of reading to do, which I will do, but it was, it was very enjoyable to spend time with all of you, as well as, again, sitting with other communities. If, you know, you think of other communities and what challenges do they have? Well, you're sitting with Terrington, they have their own challenges and they're not all our communities, but even the non-our communities have challenges and they just differ from ours. And I thought it was very educational and eye-opening. And I, in particular, one of my favorite speakers was Ted Neese from Channel 12 on Friday night and also the last speaker we had on Saturday, who talked about team dynamics and team building and I can't remember his name, but he was wonderful and I thought, wow, with my professor, I'd stay at Bryan the rest of my life because he was so exciting to listen to. So I appreciate that opportunity and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskas. Mrs. Nato?
I'll pass.
The three of you stole all the thunder, I need them, I might have had. When I'm going to, you know, this past weekend, on Friday and Saturday, there were 150 attendees to this conference at Bryan, pretty much split between school committee members and city councilors. It was an incredible two-day affair, frankly, all the subjects that my fellow committee members have talked about, but it was really a team-building weekend, collaboration weekend, projects to involve, and we learned about how we should be working hard to really develop relationships with the city council, with the administration, amongst ourselves, because frankly, we're one city and the problems, the problems face all of us. I mean, what happens in the city can impact us and vice versa. So it was an incredible time and we actually, one of the serious projects turned into a Candyland exposé of how we traverse the trials and tribulations of what, all the challenges we had to finally get to the Little Red Schoolhouse that Chairman Vice Chair Burke actually drew very well and it was out together by a Band-Aid, showing all of us that this is the ideal, this is where we want to end up. Because life is very difficult, each school day is very tough, we all work very hard and we need to keep moving. And that was, that was the message of what we presented, you must keep going until we reach our goals. So it was a lot of fun, we learned a lot and we were able to toe through the raindrops. Now, I will make a motion to reconvene in closed session at 8:20 PM for the purpose of discussing an appeal related to student records in accordance with round general laws The individual has been notified that this public body intends to convene in closed session and have declined, and has declined to have this discussion take place in open